I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. The first item on the agenda is to go into closed meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Then moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Be resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters in a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or an expansion of an existing business or industry. No previous announcement has been made of the business or industry in interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And that's Project 2013-028. And I'm sorry, that was 2.2-3711, number five. Number three is discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position, or the negotiation strategy of the public body. And that's the Motomile Park. And number seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff, members, or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consideration or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And that is inorganic adventures. Do I have a motion, please?
Moved. Second.
Then moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. You can go down front. Discussion or consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And that's for the planning commission. Now do I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
Then moved and seconded.
Yeah, we already did that.
Well, we already voted, yes.
You're in a closed meeting.
Yeah. We just need to vote on it.
All right. Roll call, please.
We already voted.
We're already voting.
Oh, yeah, you do.
All right.
She tried to read on it.
Did I do that backwards?
We do it backwards. I think we do it backwards.
I get backwards every week.
Well, it does seem backwards, so.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please. The first order of business is to go out of closed meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Then moved and seconded. And third. Got a fourth? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on the agenda is to certification of our closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened to the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
I meant, for the town that I was there, please.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation. If everybody will please stand and take a moment of silence and reflect on the business we have before us tonight. In following that, we will have Mr. Meadows lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
This pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item is addendums. We have nothing formal. Does anybody want to add anything? Okay. Then we have three allegations tonight. And our first allegation is a Virginia Cooperative Extension quarterly report led by Ms. Michelle Dickerson. Please come forward. And Kelly also.
Good evening. It's been a while since we've given you a report, but we want to share some of the things that Cooperative Extension's been involved in over the fall. And so have a few pictures for you, some of the things kids have been doing. We finished off our summer with the Montgomery County Museum Heritage Day. We always have kids to do some different club exhibits and try to share with the public some of the things that 4H has to offer. And so a couple of slides, this is one of the heritage sheep that belongs to one of our 4H members. And so we have little petting zoo there for the kids, and lots of different exhibits about some of the different clubs and all. Shooting Club, our team club, our junior naturalist club, our country kids' club, et cetera. So concluded our summer with that. And then started in the fall with our Junior Master Gardeners, which has been a very successful program for us in 4H. Kids are learning all about all aspects of gardening and environmental horticulture and forestry, as you can see from this picture. A lot of, they complete about 88 different activities and do community service for eight different learning concepts over the course of the Junior Master Gardener curriculum. So this is them in the greenhouse getting sprayed by the water system. They had a good time with that. And then we just had our graduation in early November, and this is all of our graduates. They have to complete so many educational activities and so much community service to become certified junior master gardeners. And this is our group of, new group of certified junior master gardeners, third graduating class. And then several of our volunteers have helped with that program. I was able to get some grant money to do one of our innovative programming grants to do a robotics camp. And 4H has a new curriculum on jump drawer robotics that teaches kids about critical thinking skills and creative design and the engineering process. And we worked with the Asian Society of Scientists and Engineers that came out and worked with us on a robotics camp. So the kids were designing in this activity a clip mobile and testing them on different surfaces to see which one would provide the most speed. So in this particular activity, they're designing an eco bot to clean up a toxic waste spill. And then, of course, the platform robotics or LEGO League robotics, we did some activities with that as well. So the grant provided me with some funding to purchase three robotics kits, and we're hoping as a result of this workshop that we can get some robotics teams going in our area. We start, this is Wildlife Habitat Education Program is near and dear to my heart. Worked with several teams over the course of my career and started a new team because our senior team went to the national competition a couple of years ago. And our team competed in the state competition this year near Williamsburg, and we're the first-place team. So very excited about that. Achievement Night Program, we recognize all of our clubs and activities in 4H, and our livestock club always does exceptionally well at competitions at State Fair, et cetera. So wanted to recognize all of their achievements. They had many champion and reserve champion animals, placed very well in all the stockman's contests and livestock judging. They're extremely talented in livestock activities. And just a couple of our other kids from Achievement Night. Our team club participates every year. Our entire 4H program collects macaroni and cheese for the Christmas store. And so this was just last week, us in front of Kroger collecting macaroni and cheese. I think they were able to get about 200 boxes that night, and we've been donating those in the past week or so. So just some of our activities in 4H recently. We're still very active with school programs, doing, actually scheduled to do a GPS program tomorrow morning at Margaret Beeks Elementary. So we'll see how the weather holds up for that. It's kind of hard to teach GPS indoors, but we'll see if we are able to do that or not. And we do several of those types of programs, have monthly programs at Price's Fork Elementary School with science. And then we're still working with many of our community clubs, two homeschool clubs, our shooting education club that competed in the state shooting competition this year, Teens for a Better Tomorrow, Junior Master Gardener, Junior Naturalist, two horse clubs, livestock club, five after-school programs in the Blacksburg Elementary Schools, junior naturalist programs in three elementary schools, and Auburn Elementary School. And then our country kids' clubs, and we started two new clever bud clubs this year for grades ages five through eight. So those are some of the activities that I've been involved in with 4H. I did want to mention Don Barnes, our family consumer science agent. Wanted to mention some of the programs she's been doing. We did a what's cooking workshop recently with kids, and that was a lot of fun, good food nutrition type of activity. We continue to do our financial literacy program, Reality Store at Christiansburg High School. She just trained a new group of master food volunteers and has been doing money camp with our homeschool group. And she did a little learn and serve program here in our building called Spice Up Your Lives, and learning how to use those spices in your cabinet that you rarely use. So those are some of her activities. And then before Kelly starts on the ag report, I wanted to mention that our extension office has been working on our situation analysis update. We're required to do a needs assessment every five years, and so we were due for that this year, and we just sent out the report today. And we'll be providing that for you as well, so you can see some of the priority issues that our citizens indicated were things that Extension needs to address. So that's what we've been working on. And Kelly's going to do the ag portion of the report.
Thanks, Michelle. Hey, folks, my name's Kelly Scott. I'm the Agriculture and Natural Resource Agent for Virginia Cooperative Extension. This is my second time standing before you guys, so I'm still getting to know everyone here. But I have a few slides to accompany my presentation today or my talk. And one starting slide is a marketing sheet that I have here, just to describe some of the programs offered through agriculture and natural resources and Cooperative Extension on a county level. So I'm a horticulturist at heart, so I've taken the nice daisy composite shape here and made a flower. And each pedal represents, I think my, no, there, excuse me, each pedal represents a different piece of the programming that we offer locally. You can also see that we have our county website, and we're also on Facebook. So if you guys are into social media, you can like our page. And we also have a lot of activities displayed on Flickr through photos, through a photo gallery. I'm going to just stop on this slide, because this is the last piece that I'm going to talk about, the community garden. And then I'll go through a few things, and then I'll continue on with the photos. So I started in April, just as a reminder. So for the past several months, I've been really busy with new agent training and orientation, both at Virginia Tech and at Virginia State University in Petersburg. I've attended a number of in-service related trainings, and those are subject matter related trainings, teaching us about new research coming out of the university, as well as best management practices to educate our farmers and producers on. Been participating in a number of development meetings to, just to get to know introductory-wise and development of different activities and programs that we're carrying out in the New River Valley. And I've also myself offered a number of different educational programs, including Beginning Farmer Day at Kentland Farm out in McCoy, Beef and Pasture Management Production Program, so not only teaching folks best management practices on how best to grow beef in Montgomery County, but also how to manage the pastures to support those animals. Food safety on locally grown produce. I've been working with a lot of the smaller farmers, direct marketers, selling through farmers markets or direct market sales, and just making sure their products are as safe as possible. We have a new Food Safety Modernization Act coming out through the USDA, and that's going to change the way we do a lot of business with those small direct farmers. So been prepping them on what's coming down the line. And then also private and commercial pesticide recertification classes. So those are some of the core educational programs offered locally here in the county. Three areas that I'd really like to concentrate on tonight are some areas of development that I've been working on. The first being a piece of agribusiness and agrotourism. I've been working in conjunction with Giles Montgomery and Kielaski County on a New River Valley Regional Agriculture and Tourism Coalition. That's what we've officially named ourselves. But we are looking at ways to preserve the rural character of the region, support traditional agriculture production, increase local food systems, community viability, tourism, and the marketability of this region. And currently, we're working on a strategic plan that encompasses all of those things and just getting ideas of how we can move forward in that progress. So you may have heard of that. We had some visioning sessions back in the spring in regards to that, and you may hear about that more as we develop more. Steve Sandy and Lisa Lickley have also been very instrumental in working with us on that project. Before coming to Cooperative Extension, I was employed with Virginia Beginning Farmer and Rancher Coalition Project, and I continue to work with that project. It's a coalition effort that's statewide, that is attracting new farmers. And so I continue to work with those folks with curriculum for beginning farmers, mentoring, and resources. And Virginia Cooperative Extension is a coalition member, so there's no conflict of interest or blurred lines there. That was a good, clean transition, and I'm very happy to continue to work with those folks. And then finally, where I'm going to include some of our photos here, is we have developed and implemented a new community garden in Christiansburg that we're very excited about. And here's some of our first planning drawings here that we started off with. This garden is located right down the road here on Roanoke Street. It's in the 200 block, right behind the Free Clinic. So if you guys will park in the Free Clinic and kind of walk back behind there, you'd be able to actually see it. But we've had a total of five volunteer days, and we've gotten folks to volunteer through VT Engage, the New River Valley Master Gardeners, some of our master naturalists, and other volunteer-type organizations working with us with Cooperative Extension. And the garden is actually a collaborative effort between the New River Valley Health District, the WIC program, Women Infant and Children's Program, Health and Nutrition Programs at Virginia Tech, the Virginia Family Nutrition Program, as it's appropriately titled, and us, Virginia Cooperative Extension, Montgomery County. And we're continuing to, this is one of my collaborators, Matt Meredith, having a little bit too much fun in the garden that day, and Kim Kirkright as well. These are the two ladies that are working with me to build and develop the garden. We've had five volunteer days already, and we are going to be working to offer produce to the WIC recipients, and we're also letting people know about this project and gaining, trying to gain more community support and more collaborators. So the deal's not sealed. We welcome more support and more ways to engage the community with this type of a garden. But I'm really excited about it, and I think that the activities that we can do there, from not only soil management and garden preparation, but also nutrition and health and food preparation, food safety, will be great assets for the community. All right. And that's where my presentation ends. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm amiable.
Any comments from the board?
Anything.
Questions? As usual, you've done a tremendous job, and
Yes.
Glad to see you here for the last quarter this year, and thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
And the next speaker is Literacy Volunteers of the New River Valley, Ms. Keister, please.
Good evening. My name is Janet Kester, and I'm the program coordinator for Literacy Volunteers of the New River Valley. And I really appreciate the time this evening that you all are giving me, the chance to introduce myself and just let you all know what's been happening with literacy volunteers this first half of our fiscal year. Some very good things have been going on, and you all are such wonderful supporters of literacy that I wanted to be sure we updated you. First of all, although we're just almost halfway through our program year, I'm pleased to report that we have doubled the number of volunteers and students that we serve so far compared to last year. So it's an exciting year with lots of positive things happening. Another change that we made, as so many organizations have had to do recently, and I'm sure when you all work with budgets, you have to find ways to do this, we are looking for ways to do more with less. And that's what we've been doing this fiscal year. The board decided to reorganize the staff so that we now have one part-time position, and that's my position, but at the same time aiming to serve more people in our area. And so far, that has been a success, and we're very pleased at some of the things that have been happening. As you may know, we have two main programs right now. The basic literacy, where adult volunteer tutors teach adults in the community to either read or read better. And then our English as a Second Language Program, where volunteer tutors help people who need to learn to speak conversational English, or also do reading or writing skills that are necessary for employment. So those are the two main areas we've been working in. To report that 40% of our students are Montgomery County residents, and half of our volunteers are Montgomery County residents as well. So Montgomery plays a large role in what we do. There are a couple of new things that have happened this year. One is literacy volunteers has joined into an in-kind partnership with New River Community College that has enabled us to have access to eight computers now at the literacy volunteers' office, so that we have a computer lab to offer services to students, and you'll hear more about that in a moment. Another benefit of that is we have some pro bono oversight financially by the director of the Office of Transitional Programs there. So that helps take a piece of what we were doing and gives oversight to my fiscal management so that everything is supervised, and you can have confidence that we're doing well with the money that we receive from local governments and donors and foundations and so many people who support what we do. Also, we've had some exciting grants that we received. The Corning Foundation contributed money to help us buy some updated instructional materials. Over time, some of the books get old and worn, and we need new things. So Corning was able to contribute generously to that. And we have a library volunteer who has just gone through the library, organized, integrated these new materials, and rotated out the ones that needed filtering. So now we have excellent resources there at the Christiansburg location for Montgomery County tutors. Also, the National Book Fund gave us money for new materials. These were focused to buy a collection of books for each of the satellite locations so that our tutors who are not right here in Blacksburg or Christiansburg can more easily access instructional materials without having to drive as far. So that's been wonderful. The most exciting thing, and the thing that I wanted to be sure you knew about tonight, is we are beginning a new program in addition to basic literacy and ESF. We have noticed that computers are becoming more and more essential to life, and many of our students do not have the computer skills they need to either get the job they're looking for, or move up in the companies that they're working at. So we have put together a proposal to start offering digital literacy classes in the new year. Some of these pieces are already in place. This month, we got news that we received a grant from the Community Foundation of the New River Valley to help fund some of the expenses for this new program. Also, New River is one of our partners in this with the computers that they are allowing us to use, and they are opening up a certain number of seats in their online curriculum that can be used with one-on-one tutoring, teaching computer skills to students. And we're waiting for one more piece that I hope to hear shortly is funded that will help us support the small group instruction that we'll have at our offices. So it is going to happen. The question is, how many people can we reach? And we're waiting to see that. But I really want everyone to know that these resources will be available in the new year at Literacy Volunteers. There are so many people who come by or hear of who need assistance, maybe with job applications because so many are online, or applying for unemployment, they can't figure out the online system. We don't want to just help them learn to fill out the forms at one time. We want to give them the skills that will make them more independent and able to seek and get jobs in the New River Valley. I want to thank you all particularly for your support of us. Although we can do all sorts of things and get exciting grants from corporations and foundations, really, it's the local government and the local residents who contribute to us who keep that core funding energy that is necessary. Because foundations and companies often will fund wonderful programs, but they aren't very interested in helping pay the light bill, or the rent, or, you know, these basic expenses that are necessary to keep the program going. So thank you all very much for everything that you do. And do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions or comments to the board?
You did a great job.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kester.
Thank you for being here.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
And the next presentation is meth lab cleanup and Mr. John Pummel.
Appreciate you letting me come in and tell you a little bit about this, listening to all the good things that are going on, and I'm afraid we're going to go into a little bit of the opposite end of the spectrum. Talk a little bit about meth in Montgomery. The, I'll go in a brief history, then I'll tell you some of the reasons why meth is so bad, show you some of the effects of it, and what's going on with cleanup as well. First of all, meth was invented by a Japanese chemist back in 1893, so it's 120 years it's been around. It was actually used for different things in a pill form to give some extra energy. It was actually used for different things in a pill form to give some extra energy. This ad from the 1940s actually talks about this woman and how she was so tired and couldn't clean up the kitchen. She goes and takes pops these little pills and gets it all cleaned up. Then they started seeing about the side effects and they got rid of it. Now Hitler used it. He was actually on it himself, but his, the Luftwaffe, his air force actually used it. It was called a Hyallic Chocolate. And they would take that, they could bite a lot longer and it was, it was, they were a lot easier, too. Again, kind of saw what was going on with it. It went out of favor, was brought back in the 1960s, and it's been around ever since then. But some prime ingredients with meth, a lot of people will talk about Sudafed. They always say Sudafed. Well, it's a bunch of different ones. And the main thing is the D on there. That's why if you get any of these products at a pharmacy right now, you do have to sign for it because they know that this is being used for meth. But there's, you'll see in some of these pictures that there's, they're completely available, quite cheaply actually. This is part of the reasons why meth has so much collateral damage. What you're looking at here, these are the ingredients that are used to break down the Sudafed to make it into meth. And you start looking at some of these things, paint thinner, red devil wine, brake fluid, acetone, uratic acid. When I was doing research on this, I was, I went to a Lowe's and was looking at uratic acid. And the guy said that where some had spilled, and it's used, of course, to clean concrete, but where it had spilled, it had actually eaten through the concrete. But yet, people are ingesting this. And you'll see in a little bit what the effects of that are. But this, these are the chemicals that they're using. And then batteries, because they're using the lithium strips out of the batteries in order to make this whole thing boil. And this is the reason why you're seeing such an influx of meth right now. This is known as the one pot or shake and bake method. And with this, you'll notice all the white parts there, that's actually some of the meth there, the black parts right there, the little pieces, that's actually what happens with the lithium strip after it boils everything out. It just, it goes down to just that little piece of black mess that's in there. So we start seeing this, we actually have kids with the big pockets and all, they're walking around with smaller bottles, and they're making meth as they're walking around. And that's happening right now. This was actually founded a meth lab here in Christiansburg. This particular lab meant a little bit more to me. Not only did my company clean it, but when I went into this place, four months after it was busted, they had aired it out, they had taken a lot of this stuff out, but apparently didn't air out this one closet that I opened up. And within minutes, I started feeling lightheaded. I had to walk outside, felt better, but as soon as I walked back in, I started smelling this smell again and was lightheaded. When I talked to the police officers that busted this, because the first ones that go in there do not have hazmat suits. They're going in there, there were four police that actually had to go to the emergency room that night because they said it was like a haze that was in there. But you could see some of the things that they have in here. You had to see the uratic acid, the drenol, different duds that they use for that. All these types of things are being used on there. Here's the generic type of Sudafed that's being used. You see batteries right there, all those batteries that are split. If there's split lithium batteries that have been used for a meth lab, there's no other reason to split open a lithium battery. It destroys the battery itself, but the lithium strips were used. Here's another example. The ads don't mean anything. This was all just in the trash can, but you see the Energizer batteries and wall fed, which, you know, just another generic brand. And here's some of the two liter bottles, once again, that they were using on it. This is what crystal meth looks like. And here's another view into this same house. And the reason that I like to show these is because this is what the meth labs look like. This is not after the police busted it and started throwing things around. This is the way that they're living in it. And you'll notice, especially all those clothes there, that is not unusual. They constantly are taking off clothes as they're walking around. The thing that really gets me is you'll see some kids' toys there. Although the kids were not there when it was busted, obviously, they had been there They tend to put drapes over so you can't see what's going in. This is just another view of that same room back a little bit, but you'll see the drapes right in there that they don't want anybody seeing in there. A lot of times, they'll have fans that are in and it goes out. You won't have an air coming in, they're always going out because they're trying to air out the place. Lightbulb right there. With, a lot of times, you go into meth labs and there's a lot of lightbulbs that are missing. That's because they're making meth pipes. What you do is you split up in the end there, and there's like a tube that's going into that. And they put the meth in there and light it up underneath and smoke it, the pipe. You'll also see the aluminum foil right up by there. That's another typical way that they'll smoke it. They'll go and put the meth in there, they'll have a lighter underneath it, and usually they use, we find a lot of tubes, glass tubes, that they kind of snort it out. Well, not snort it, but smoke it, I guess, really call it. This particular door, and you'll see the front door there, has a curtain over it, once again, again, they don't want anybody seeing in there. But this door really meant something to me because when I went in there, I noticed it. And there's a lot of little artwork that's done. So these people actually have some skills to it. But it says, "I was gonna," and then there's a verb right there. What you don't see where that quote is underneath there, it says, "But I got high instead." And I looked at that, I'm going like, you know, that is so pathetic. These people obviously have some skills and they're going to do something, but they got high instead. Actually kind of pathetic. So the faces of meth. This is a guy only three months after being on meth. But the reason I like to show this particular one is because you see all the sores on his face. That is not unusual. They have a lot of meth bugs. What this is, is it's so hateful that these people actually think that there are bugs crawling on them and they start scratching, arms, legs, torso, it doesn't matter, face, and they scratch it down so that there's sores on it. They really think that things are crawling on them. That's what, two and a half years later. I mean, she obviously looks pretty bad at age forty years and not good years either. This is four years, and you can especially see the teeth on that. You'll see that in just a second. But four years, that's what happened. And this one, this is ten years. You see the first five years, she's not too bad, but the last five years, I mean, she's turning into a skeleton and she died at age thirty, eighty on that one. But here's some examples of meth mouth. It actually takes the, everything off of your teeth so that they turn black, or just like this, that was kind of that woman that I had a picture of earlier. It just really messes with their mouth a lot. So some of the laws and facts that are going in, there is a state law that was actually put into effect in July 1st, 2013. The only problem with that was is that that was a disclosure law that says that if you had a meth lab in a house that you're trying to sell, rent, hotel, any of that, you would have to disclose that. But we've been working on the cleanup part of it, and that kind of got pushed back a little bit, so that's probably not going to be put into effect until July of 2014. So they backed up the disclosure law one year, fully anticipate that the meth guideline law will be put into action in July of 2014. There's only 22 states that currently have guidelines for cleaning up meth labs. They don't have it currently. You do not have to do anything. You don't have to disclose it, you do not have to clean it up. Collateral damage on there could cause a lot of issues, and especially with, people could get sued later on. That's why I always tell property owners that they need to get it cleaned up and there are guidelines for it. In fact, in Christiansburg, they enacted, it's been in effect almost two years now, where you do have to clean up a place before you re-rent it. So they, the property owner could actually be billed for the police cleanup also. That's something that they're looking at. There's other places. What my company does is clean up after the fact. But the police, when they busted, they had to do special things to get all the dangerous chemicals out. And that costs money. We're talking about anywhere from fifteen hundred to a couple thousand dollars for each bust. And that is coming out of either county or town coffers. So they're looking at charging on that. So some of the basic guidelines, one of the things that we're looking now is to pre-test. Now that is something that my company does not do. We always get a third party involved because it could be a conflict of interest. But because of the shake and bake method, we are now finding that some places do not have to be cleaned. They can test down to .005 microns. And just to give you an instance of how much that is, one strand of hair is about 42 microns. So we can go, we can test down to .005. The state law that's going to come out is going to be .015 or something like that. So if you can test down to .005 and it's not showing anything, so nobody else can clean up anything more than that. So it does not have to be done, and that can save people a lot of money. You're talking about a couple hundreds of dollars versus thousands of dollars. But let's say you did, it does have to be cleaned. Well, first thing is ventilation. Like I said about that house, and it was ventilated very well except for that closet. Then we have the contamination removal and disposal. We're talking about sheets, bedding, furniture, may have to be the carpeting, all those types of things. Clothes should be thrown away, although clothes can be washed in a strong detergent a couple of times unless it's stained. If it's stained with any chemicals, we always suggest being thrown out. Personally, I say throw all of it out because it's dangerous and nasty stuff. All surfaces, we're talking about floors, walls, ceilings, cabinets, in cabinets, behind cabinets, everything needs to be cleaned. Ventilation system, duct work. If you have ducts, don't get it cleaned, you have done nothing because as soon as the AC or the heat comes back on, it starts throwing all that stuff back out. So duct work is very important to get that cleaned. Plumbing, because they are taking the materials and they're putting it down the toilets, the drain, the sinks and the bathtubs. And of course, putting it all into our system. Sometimes plumbing, especially the traps, could get, you may have to get a plumber to come in there and clean out the traps on it because of the key weeks of paper and stuff. Then you'd have to repaint and seal. And then the final step would be the true, the last testing, which is the most important, to see how a company like mine has done, for instance. So far, we're 100%, but, you know, sometimes it's, hang on, I mean, it's, you admit sometimes. That's why testing is so important. So at least at that time, everything has been cleaned out. That doesn't mean that it's going to stay that way forever, so if it comes in, there's another meth lab. These are actually the police officers. These are the ones that are taking the chemicals out. And you'll notice, this is how the workers in my company go in also. They're in full hazmat suits. They do, they have masks on, not always full head mask like that, sometimes it's lesser than that, but it depends. This particular one, like I said, was almost a haze out there. So they really wanted to make sure that they was taken care of. But you see the tape all around their hands, their feet, everything like that. So they're going in there taking this out because it's still dangerous there. Just like this one here, this one is not, the other ones are all but, a lot of the pictures right here from the Christiansburg TV, this one is off the internet. But this, I like to show people how it is being put outside because this is still very dangerous stuff. And they usually put it into a 55-gallon drum. They do that because it could still explode. In fact, that's what happened in Bedford County last year. They were putting it in a 55-gallon drum and it did explode. Luckily, nobody was hurt. That's why they have it out there. So with that, any questions?
Any questions?
No, it's just...
Any comments from anybody?
Yeah, how many of these have you cleaned up?
Well, I can go back to the last three years in particular. Probably, my company alone, probably, it's going to be in the thirties somewhere. We're doing about 10 plus a year. But that's not just in Montgomery County, that's New River and Roanoke. We're not the only ones that clean it up. And like I said, some of it's not being done.
So after you clean it up, who tests to make sure it's clean?
There's a particular group that's out of Roanoke that we recommend. They do have a, they have something up here. It's ECS, I believe is the name of the company. But this guy has been testing quite a bit. He does mold testing for us as well, but he can test them out loud.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr. Tull.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
And we all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is public address. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at public address? There's nobody signed up. If so, please come forward, say your name and address, and you'll have five minutes, Seeing no one, we will close our public address session. The next item is consent agenda. Do you have a motion, please?
Summed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Parkins?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Valdez?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And subject B is to schedule a public hearing, resolution scheduling a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of a stormwater management easement across the portion of the Christiansburg Middle School property for the benefit of the adjacent property owners, B&amp;B Storage LLC. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Could we have some discussion on that? I'm not really sure what's going on. When it says we're doing something for the public, I hope we're always doing something for the public, but has it got anything to do with taking away from the school?
The school board or the school staff received a request from B&amp;B Storage to, for the schools to get a stormwater management easement. If you look on your, on the agenda, you'll see that it shows an easement that's being proposed. And what's going on with water already, what the school staff has told us and may support the request, but it still has to go to the school board and get them to say it's okay. And we always ask for their okay since they're in control of the property even though we own it. Water's already draining that way, surface-wise?
to, uh, for the schools to, uh, to, to get a stormwater management easement. If, if you look on your, uh, on the, uh, agenda, you'll see that there, it shows a, uh, an easement that's being proposed. And what, what's going on with water already, what, what the school staff has told us, and it may support the request, uh, but it still has to go to the school board and get them to, uh, say it's okay. And we always ask for their okay since they're in control of the property, even though we own it. Um, what, water's already draining that way, uh, surface-wise? And the, the property owner above is, is doing a subdivision, and he wants to improve, uh, he's not going to put any more water than that's already there. In fact, he's going to slow down the water because of stormwater management. Uh, but at the same time, the water's going to trickle through his pond and then get, come through a pipe and then go into the school's pond that's right there. And so the easement will be needed in order to put the pipe there. So now the water, instead of being surface water, which would not need an easement, if he's going to put a pipe there, then they need the stormwater easement. So that's the purpose of the, uh, of the easement itself. The language will be written in such a way that, uh, the Home Loan Association, that subdivision will be responsible for that pipe, and so the county will not have any maintenance responsibility for that pipe at all.
Is all of this land owned county, none in Christiansburg?
No, it's in the town of Christiansburg, but, uh, the reason we're, we have to do a public hearing in order to grant any property interests, and this easement's a property interest that they're asking for us to grant to them.
I guess my question is, does, do we need to, uh, give them permission, or does the county, or does the, does the town?
No, we have to, just to grant them an easement, the town's regulating the stormwater part of it, but we're not, the town is. And so they're complying, they being, B&amp;B Storage is complying with the town of Christiansburg's stormwater regulation.
Okay, but they have gotten permission to use the town's drainage field? Or their retention pond?
No, it's not the town's. It's the, uh, the, the, right now, what's happening is the developer has to retain the water. He cannot let the water, uh, be released off his property any, any, in a, in a fashion that's faster or more quantity than it's already there. So he's got to slow down the water because he's going to put in some previous surface, in previous surface. And so, but the water's already going that way, so he wants the pipe in. In order to put the pipe in the ground, he's got to get easement from the property owner, which is us. And so that's the purpose of this public hearing. They, the schedule is to consider, uh, public comment on that requested easement.
And there's nothing extra we have to do to put it into Christiansburg's retention pond?
No, Christiansburg doesn't have a retention pond.
They don't?
No, the pond that's right there is, is on, is on, uh, school's property or our property. There's a retention pond there that we're draining water to...
Yeah, I just know, you know, there's a line right there. I think the, the school actually sits on the line there.
Yeah, but thi- thi- this case has nothing to do with town or county boundary, other than the town regulates the stormwater. And so they're the ones who have to approve what the engineers come forward with. That's the only, that's the only thing that has any bearing on what jurisdiction we're in.
Thank you.
And just to add, do people normally pay for the stormwater drains? Is this something that normally it, the county should be receiving something, some monetary?
Well, you could ask for that. Uh, with, with, the school staff was stated that they wanted to be good neighbors, and the water was already going that way. It's not providing any more of a burden, so they, they did not, uh, recommend or state that they wanted to be compensated, or that we should be compensated.
Is this going to get, you said it's now going to go underground, is, I, and I guess at the public hearing, we can get this more fleshed out. So it's going to allow maybe the schools to be able to use the property a little bit differently, uh, void a marshy area, and...
That's possible. If you look, I don't have, I don't know if the overhead's in there, I don't think, but it's, like, here's the school building, it's way up at the top, it's in an area that's not being used.
Okay.
And it's, like I said, it's draining. If you've ever been over to that middle school, there's an area that's, that's third detention area, and it's like, it's a dry basin, it's not always wet. And so that's where the water's going anyway. And in fact, there's a whole retention that, and we'll get the engineers to come in and explain this to us at the public hearing, but there's a whole, like, chain that all this water is naturally going anyway, and this is, this is consistent with what naturally the water's draining. So it's not a big change, other than there'll be a pipe there now sitting in underground instead of sheeting across the, the property.
Let me ask one more question to that.
Sure. And remember, this is a lawyer talking about engineering stuff, so...
And the question is, who, who is responsible for the cleanup?
You know, after so many years, a pond will get silt in it to work, has to be cleaned out. Who's responsible for doing that?
That would be us, yes, over the schools, yes.
So there seems if we've got to redo that, then we should get something for anybody putting water in it, because it's going to make it come to fruition quicker.
Right, but it, remember, there, there's no more water going in that's already been, that's already going in there anyway. I mean, that's, so they're, they're not looking to channel and put more water in there. The same amount of water's going there now that will, once this is put in. And that's what they're telling us, and maybe we could ask that question from us.
And I said, that's just questions that, uh, I have...
Eventually, we'll have to...
Somebody, somebody's got to be responsible for doing that, and that's not cheap when you go do it.
That'd be a good question to ask them.
Just, it's just something that...
Yeah. Marty, is this behind the school?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, because I think the stormwater, the pond, rather, the pond we run up on, that's be way behind the, the school, um...
Yeah, it's right on the boundary line. I think it's right in the ponds here, and this is like here, so it, and the school's here, so it'd be behind it, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cready?
It's just to schedule a public hearing. We're not approving anything.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tutt?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brown.
I wonder what that could be.
Subject C, resolution of appreciation, James D. Polittis, Board of Supervisors. Resolution of appreciation for James D. Polittis, Board of Supervisors. Whereas James D. Jim Polittis has served as citizens of Montgomery County since January 1, 1998, when he began his term on the Board of Supervisors. And whereas Jim Polittis served as vice chair of the Board of Supervisors in 2009 and 2010, and as chair of the Board of Supervisors in 2004, 2011, and 2012, and 2013. And whereas Jim Polittis also served on the AFD Advisory Board, was Chamber of Commerce liaison, has served on the County School Liaison Committee, Economic Development Alliance, Fire and District Home Board of Directors, Finance Board, alternate on the Fire and Rescue Commission, Montgomery County Improvement Council, Montgomery County Tourism Development Council, New River Valley Planning District Commission, Real Estate Committee, Resource, Conservation and Development District, Road Reviewers, Social Services, Board, Transportation Safety Commission. And whereas Jim Polittis served on the Public Service Authority from 1998 through 2013, and was chair of the Public Service Authority 2000 to 2004, 2006, 2007, and 2010. Whereas Jim Polittis has been an active participant of the Virginia Association of Counties, and served on VACO's Transportation Steering Committee in 2012, vice chair, and 2013. VACO's Resolutions Committee in 2012, and VACO's Environment and Agno- Agriculture Steering Committee in 2012 and 2013. Uh, I had to think to move, um, uh, okay. As long as it is, I probably needed a break, right? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Whereas during sixteen years on the Board of Supervisors, Jim Polittis has evidenced his commitment to the citizens of Montgomery County by his efforts to complete the joint study and establish the New River Valley Regional Water Authority, to expand existing capacity to house the inmates for their respective jurisdiction by working with Franklin County, Roanoke County, and the city of Salem to create the Western Virginia Regional Jail Authority, to establish a jointly sponsored tourism program by working with the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, to establish a jointly sponsored tourism program, to provide a responsive and efficient means of handling 911 emergency communications within the county by establishing the regional 911 authority with the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg and Virginia Tech. And whereas in 2012, Jim Polittis was appointed to the Board of Directors of Virginia Carers, the only statewide provider of offender re-entry services, which assist offenders and ex-offenders in safely and responsibly transitioning from incarceration to productive, normal life. And whereas Jim Polittis has worked diligently with state legislators and congressional representatives on issues to improve economic conditions and generate additional revenue for the county, including support for federal legislation that would grant state legislators to the authority to license and regulate the commercial production of hemp as an agriculture and industrial commodity. Whereas Jim Polittis' tenure on the Board of Supervisors include the undertaking of numerous capital projects, including a new courthouse, a public safety building, a new Price's Fork Elementary School, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, Eastern Montgomery High School, Blacksburg High School, and Auburn High School, and Auburn Middle School. And whereas the members of this body recognize his years of service have been marked by dedication to the best interests of Montgomery County, and has earned the admiration and high regard of his fellow public services, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the entire citizenship hereby extends a unanimous vote of appreciation and gratitude to James D. Polittis for his outstanding public service and dedication, with best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that the original of this resolution be presented to James D. Polittis as a testimony of the high esteem and appreciation in which he is regarded by the Board of Supervisors, and that a copy be a part of the official minutes of Montgomery County. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Motion and a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tutt?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Cready?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Appreciate it. And, uh, just, you get to do this again, you know, on the sixteenth.
Hey, I was, I was practicing, mate. I was practicing.
And, uh, we're going to have some very special paper that this is begun on. I have a friend in Washington who is sending me down some hemp papers.
Oh.
And, uh...
From Gary.
It's from Gary.
From Gary. Down there. Pay attention.
Oh. Too poor to pay attention.
Too, too poor to pay attention.
But anyway, I appreciate that very much.
The only thing about this one, that was a short version that we come up with.
So, the way you're saying, Bill, is when we do it again, you're going to have it memorized?
We've got a couple more weeks to do it.
Mary, I can't remember what I done yesterday, like, something that long.
What do you mean, yesterday?
Anyway, let's move along. Uh, county attorney's report.
I have no report.
County administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items this evening. Uh, first off, we're monitoring the weather conditions outside, and, uh, depending on how things are in the morning, we may or may not open county offices on time. We'll just have to see how things look in the morning, but, um, we'll get the information out very quickly in the morning, and I'll certainly, uh, send you guys a note. I don't know that you want me to call you at 5:30 when I'm talking to everybody else, but we'll, uh, we'll get that out in the morning. Also, I'd be pleased to report to you that I've begun the review of the, um, applicants for planning director, and we've gotten quite a few very good applications. So, uh, over the next week or so, I'm going to try to conduct a few phone interviews, and then hopefully, um, early part of December, begin some face-to-face interviews and try to keep that process moving as quickly as possible, because, um, January 21st, I believe, is Steve's last day, and we'd certainly love to have somebody on board as soon as possible to fill that void. Um, also want to pass out some information that I received on Friday from Dan Campbell, who's the county administrator in Floyd County. Um, his board has adopted a resolution requesting the General Assembly increase the land disturbance threshold, uh, related to the new stormwater regulations from one acre to five acres. Um, he indicated they've shared this resolution with Representative Rush and Senator Smith, and hoping that they may consider sponsoring that in the upcoming General Assembly session. Tonight, I just wanted to pass it out to you mainly for information purposes, if that's something the board would also like to support. Uh, we can certainly add that to an agenda, um, in December for consideration, and also can bring it up with our legislative delegation, uh, when we meet with them in just a couple of weeks as well. But as you're well aware, stormwater's going to be a big challenge, and especially for the rural areas of our county and, uh, other areas that have a lot of rural character, uh, what they've suggested would, would be very good. I wanted to mention to you as well that, um, I wanted you to target the date of Saturday, January 25th. I'd sent out an email a week or so ago about, uh, possible day-long work session to talk about priorities and focusing on 2014 and beyond. Uh, several of you sent back that Saturday was probably going to be the best time to try to do something, so I took a shot and looked out on the calendar in January at, at Saturday, January 25th. Uh, don't have to answer me tonight, but I'll certainly send out, uh, an email with that, but I wanted to just let you know that's, that's what I was looking at as far as a possible date.
Looks good to me.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Tutt?
Um, this time of year, you start thinking about, looking around at what you're so thankful for, and, and one, we live in the greatest country in the world, I think, and, and I look at this area that we live in, we get four seasons. We've got great people around here.
That's right.
So many things to be thankful for. So many times in life, we've looked at the glass being half-empty, when really, it's even more than half-full. And so with that, nothing else to add, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to adding a few things. As a matter of fact, it's a roast, right, that we're having on the sixteenth?
Sure.
Dean Martin used to hold some of them, so, uh, I look forward to, to add a few more comments about Jim on the sixteenth.
Thank you. Supervisor Gabriel?
No report.
Supervisor Cready?
Just want to ask if the, knowing more about the Reese, Reese Mountain Road, ever seen...
Um, yes. Mr. Reed with Reed Construction Company is supposed to be finalizing the work up there. That was supposed to happen last week. Don't think it did. Uh, I've been in contact about every other day with our folks downstairs, and my understanding is once he addresses that, then we'll be closing that out, but we're waiting on the street.
Okay, that's all. And that's all, thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
No report.
Hmm? No report. Supervisor Brown?
Well, no official report, but I would, uh, like to say this, that had an opportunity and, and, Mr. Perkins, too, to, to come and, and have Thanksgiving lunching with, um, county employees, which was, um, a, a real nice event. And what I'd like to say is that, uh, I wish all L County employees, you know, a happy and, and blessed and thankful Thanksgiving.
Jim, I have just one more to say.
You, you guys, too.
I did, I did mean to say something, and I didn't. And what I was going to say is that to everybody that came to the Sheila Motomile Talent Competition, uh, you'll know what I'm talking about. If you were there, I guarantee you enjoyed it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I'd be surprised if somebody don't take two of those groups and put it on the road. I think, I think there's, uh, enough talent there that, you know, they could fill up about any place they wanted to go, once word got out that they were out there, so, uh, I, I, it was just a great night of, of really, really good competition, uh, and I enjoyed it tremendously, and just wanted to, uh, say that, uh, we'll be having another one next year about the same time, so if you weren't at the last one, you might think about getting some tickets for the next one, so it's, it's very, very good.
And so Supervisor Tutt? It says Supervisor Tucker again, but I believe it's Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I would agree with Gary on that, and I sort of want to echo what Chris had to say. You know, when you look around, there is a lot to be thankful for, and one of the things I'm thankful for is having served with you, Jim, for 16 years. It's a long time. That's my crazy...
I'm not going there.
I know, but it's not crazy in a kid to be a sophomore in high school. Have you ever thought about that?
You raised a Jim.
And the other thing is, I'm really proud of our board and the way that we operate as a board, and the way, even if we disagree, we go on and we move on, because when I had the chance to be at the VACO Annual Conference, I did run into a couple of different board members from different localities that were telling me of trouble they were having on their board, and with members not getting along and members sort of undermining other members and that kind of thing, and it just registered to me that I'm just thankful for the board that we have, and for what we do, and how we operate together. And I just wanted to tell each of you, I'm thankful for working with you on the board. Have a good Thanksgiving.
And I have a couple of things myself. Number one, Auburn had a good football season. They lost Saturday night, but they made it into the playoffs, and they worked hard. The other thing that happened out at Auburn High School was the girls won state in volleyball. So that's another big accomplishment, and this is our second year in a row to do that. Thirdly, I attended the talent show, and it was the fastest three hours I've ever been through. It was fast-paced, it was entertaining, and it was a night that I won't forget, so. And fourthly, I'm going to make my big talk on the 16th about my feelings about this board, which are all positive, and my service to the community, and I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you all on the 2nd.
Well, Jim, if we're all going to have a chance to talk on the 16th, we better start the meeting about 2:00 in the afternoon.
Maybe 5:00, 5:00 o'clock.
You sure that's enough time?
Because I'm not sure, I think 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon is probably a better time, because we know what to say.
Well, we're having a reception prior to that.
Oh, well, but this has got to be even before that.
So, I appreciate it, Ms. Perkins.
My way.
So, and I call the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Happy day. Thanks.
Thank you for reading that.